It's going to take a lot more than a five-person Economic Development Board, or the seven-person City Council, or the five-person County Commissioners, or even the Hospital Board. The public, at this point, really needs to have a stake in the game, and needs to come forward and to have some honest discussions and some ideas. And even more than just the community, I'd say, the younger people. Those younger people in their twenties that are in Newcastle and Weston County raising their kids. Those people that don't want to leave. Those people that want their kids to grow up in Newcastle and graduate an NHS doggy just like they did. Those are the people that are going to have to step up and come forward and and offer some solutions and do a little bit of soul-searching and becoming a more active member in the community.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's School Board meeting. If you would join me in the Pledge of Alisha. Alisha Ingle, would you lead our senior pledge, please?
Let the regions to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us tonight. I have one agenda change, and that is under for your administration, or for your information reports, we're adding committee reports to that. And we're going to move the Student Representative Report up between D and E. So she doesn't have to stay all night. Are there any other changes? You have a motion, please? Move to approve? It's been moved and seconded to approve the amended agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Recognitions. Mr. Bartlett? Surprise.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few. But I would recognize a few eighth-grade boys that helped me unload the Tota Hope food truck. Remember, we started doing that last year. So Weston McConkey, Dustin Porter, Callan Smith, and Braxton Von I helped make quick work of that this morning, so I appreciate them. My usual maintenance department recognition goes to Todd and Scott, Todd McCollum and Scott Garhart, just stepping up and doing some things that aren't necessarily part of their job description, but they just, they take pride in what they do, and they helped us out, so I appreciate that. And then, kind of an interesting recognition, but I do want you guys to get this one. Our middle school ELA staff, which is Rebecca Tacy, Lindsay Berlin, and Nikki Bartlett. We had professional development here today. I bet Sonya will tell you about it. So I'm going around room to room to kind of make sure subs are doing okay. And in every room that I go to, I hear those ladies' voices teaching. And I'm like, well, no, they're, they're over here at the training. That doesn't make sense. Well, they created videos, they, they done the extra work to where they record the lesson, the kids can watch the video. The learning keeps happening, it makes life easier for subs, and then they still get to come over here and do the professional development. So I think that's pretty cool when we're using our technology and we're putting in the extra work to do something like that. So I'd give them a shout-out.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. LaCroy?
Madam Chair, I would like to recognize PAR, our neighbors to the west. Last Thursday, they donated $33,000 to help with the pool project.
Awesome. Thank you very much. That is certainly appreciated. Sonya?
I would like to recognize the Building Secretaries and the Principals, because we have a lot of professional development kind of going on, and finding subs and coverage, it really is tricky. So I do appreciate all their work behind the scenes, trying to fill that, just so teachers can make sure to be present. So, thank you.
Thanks. We appreciate that kind of teamwork, for sure. Anyone else? All right. We'll move on to visitors' comments, and first of all, we would like to meet the new staff. Bryce?
At the high school, I'd like to introduce Andrea Gregory. Last year, she served with us as an intern and completed her hours, and so she's very familiar with staff, familiar with students. She was immediately able to leverage those connections to to keep building upon those connections she made last year and, and building new ones with students, and I just I'm so grateful to have her as a part of our team. I think it's going to be an awesome fit for many years. So, thank you, Andrea.
Okay, two in my building. So I would recognize Michaela Stevenson and Courtney McFarland. I'll make them stand for a while, and I'll talk about them and make it awkward, too. Michaela is a great example of why we have sub shortages all the time, is because when we have good ones, we hire them. We've been doing it for years. But she was pretty much in our building, I think, maybe two months straight towards the end of last year. So when an opening came up, she was a really natural fit. So she's a special education para in the middle school. And then I'll just tell you a little bit about Courtney. She called this summer asking really good questions as a mom that was potentially moving to the community. And she was just really polite, and she was really focused, and seemed really smart, and I just thought, all right, this is a pretty cool mom. And then we had an opening come up, and so we actually called her and encouraged her to apply. And so she's also a special education para professional in our building, and she's new to our community, and they're both doing a great job. So, yes.
All right. Are you ready? I have several. So we're going to start with Alexis Ingle. She's teaching fourth grade for us. Many of you might recognize her. She was Alexis Volker and recently got married, and I'm still calling her Alexis Volker from time to time. Dating myself there, but she was in fifth grade originally when we hired her, and then we did that last-minute move to fourth grade, and I totally appreciate it. She's jumped right in and been a real asset to the team, bringing some different experience from her previous position, so we're lucky to have her. Glad you're here. All right. The next one is Lolene Carter. Yes, we stole Lolene from the middle school. She was a para there, and she's now teaching fifth grade. And another one that made that last-minute change, she was hired for second grade, and then last minute, we changed her to fifth grade, so kind of a little jump there, but she took it on and has done a great job. She's a great team member, and I think we're going to have great things happening there, so glad you're here. All right, then we also have Clacy Domina. Clacy is a special education para in the building, and we threw her right into the heat of things right from day one, and she has jumped in and been a real asset. You couldn't tell that she's kind of new to us. She's like, she's been there forever, so we appreciate it, and she's great with our kids. We're lucky to have her, so. And then I get to introduce one for the district. Angie Stanton is our new district nurse. Angie has done a really great job. I think jumping into that position can be a little bit overwhelming, because none of us are medical people, so we can't really say, hey, this is what you should be doing. So it's kind of, you know, trial by fire, and she jumps in and has to kind of dig into how to do things, and she's done a really great job, great with the kids, and works well with us and the staff. So appreciate her efforts and all that she's doing. That's all I have.
Well, we would like to welcome all of you. Thank you for choosing us, and we are very happy to have you part of the team of dedicated professionals here, so, welcome. We appreciate you. All right, visitors' comments. We have, we have one that we're going to do in executive session, and we visited about that beforehand. Any other comments? All right. Yes?
On a personal note, I would like to ask everybody to hold the Charlie Kirk family up in your prayers this evening. His wife and two young children have been on my mind all afternoon.
And the school shooting in Colorado, too, today. Okay. Presley, would you give us the Student Council School Report?
Okay, so, school is officially kicked off, and everybody's back into their groove of everything. FFA had their first meeting last night, and we'll be participating in Living History Days tomorrow. We have quite a few of our livestock people bringing in their animals to show off, and then the rest of us are just going to tag along and help where it is needed. FBLA had their first, like, interest meeting. We have quite a few people on our list that are slightly interested. So that first meeting will happen next week. FCA is kicking off their stuff. I know their big church night, I guess you could call it, is in October. So they're inviting all of the athletes and anybody interested in that group to come attend. Shout-out to the varsity golf team this weekend. They all played under 100, and so they were actually competitive and placed up in the top three. So that was really exciting for them as they move on to regionals and state in the next two weeks. Sources of Strength had their peer training today. Kudos to all of the staff that made that possible. Unfortunately, we couldn't have all of our staff there due to subs and everything, but the staff that did come and stayed behind did an excellent job at getting us a trainer and all of the things, and setting that up. I would also like to kind of shout out Mrs. Gregory, our counselor. She started a new thing called Counselor Newsletter. It's posted all around our school for all of our students. It's very helpful. She's very much put herself out there, and we really appreciate that as high school students. She's also been a good asset to have when it comes to scholarships and opportunities. She's been on the ball with that with all of her busy schedule, so we really appreciate that. And then Student Council, homecoming obviously is underway. The parade applications are out, so we encourage you, if people are asking, or if any of you in the audience would like to have a parade float. All school-related ones are free. Community ones do, there is a charge. But if you need one of that, you can get ahold of me, or Mrs. Yu, or Sean Paul, who's the head of that committee. We have just been working really hard on our theme, dress-up days, you know, all the things that come with homecoming. We'd also like to shout out Kim Consleman, because she will be another suburban bus slash bus driver-ish for us to go to SL, FL, see, actually. And so we really appreciate her for that opportunity, so we don't have to steal any bus route drivers. And then, I know I invited you guys to our next meeting, but I would also invite you guys to, if you can, come to our Staff Appreciation Breakfast that will be happening on Wednesday, the first at seven, I believe. I'll get you more details for that. But we have an amazing staff in Newcastle, and so it's really important that we thank them for all their work. School's really, you know, gotten busy, so we appreciate what they're doing, and so we invite you guys to come and extend that thank you as well. Do you guys have questions?
Okay. I'm just sorry you're not busy.
I know, I know.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Thank you, Presley. We appreciate your report. And hopefully, some of us will make it to breakfast. All right, action items, the consent agenda. Move to approve? It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. We have no old business. So the next item on our agenda is our executive session. May I have a motion?
Motion second.
It's been moved and seconded to have an executive session under Wyoming Statute 16-4-405IX. And I was going to say, it's not the 6:30 fire call, is it? Okay. Try again later, huh? And a student issue under Wyoming Statute 16-4-405XI. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Meeting back to order. Next up, thanks everyone for your patience. New business. Would you explain the recommendation here, Brad? And do you think we need to look at maybe the 29th or 30th, instead of absolutely canceling?
Thank you. So, Madam Chair, the reason I have the recommendation on there is I am not in town on the 24th. I'm actually scheduled to be at the University Board meetings. So I was making the recommendation that we would just go to the next meeting, although there are some other issues pending now, that maybe one extra board meeting a month wouldn't kill anybody. We could look at the 20th.
I guess we could look at October 1st, too, but does anybody have a preference? I, I think it's going to behoove us to have a meeting sooner than almost a month.
Madam Chair, the end of September is not good for me to schedule a meeting.
Okay. October 1st?
If October 1st looks better.
That's Wednesday.
Yep.
So I, I don't want some issues to sit that long. And it could be a very short meeting. But
That's pretty
I mean, we
Pretty well shift-coded.
We'll talk about what to put on it, and so add October 1st.
Not for a special meeting, but just a rescheduled
Yes.
Rescheduled regular
Rescheduled. So if you would recommend moving, right?
So my recommendation would be to move the regular scheduled meeting from the September 24th to October 1st, Madam Chair.
You have a motion? It's been moved and seconded to move our September 24th meeting to October 1st. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Please put that on your calendars.
Same time.
Same time, 7:00. Yes. Classified recommendation.
Madam Chair, I would recommend to the Board, Keisha Wilson has a special education para.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the classified recommendation for Keisha Wilson as a special education para. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Do you have a report for us, Bo?
I don't have anything tonight unless you guys have questions for me.
Questions? I don't see any. Angie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have anything unless there's any questions for me.
Thank you. Thanks for sticking it out with us, too. Superintendent LaCroy?
So, Madam Chair, I, I don't have a report, however, don't get too excited. I do have a report that I would share to you. Ms. Olson is not able to attend the meeting tonight. And as you saw earlier, I'm very excited about the new hires that we do have in special ed. The elementary is still down, special ed para. And now that they're, you know, in the middle of scheduling students, it looks like what they're going to attempt to do is still try to rehire the one position of a special ed teacher, and then the ongoing pursuit of a special education slash case manager secretary. The special ed department is currently providing services and support to 124 students K-12. Elementary is 72, middle is about 25, high school is 27. We have had seven students that have transferred in to Weston One on IEPs from Wyoming and other states. Already scheduling meetings in mid-October, so the team is, you know, jumping quickly on the paperwork and the collaborations with the new families. Also wanted to this is a little awkward, but I'm going to just read it the way it is. Had a great collaboration with the Weston County Health Services Therapy Department, both Mike and Siney, for student-specific training that needed to occur at one of the schools to help with the student needs. And also, on the 504 side, we will, we'll have all of our 504 annual meetings in August. In the first week of September, we are currently providing services and supports for 15 students that are on 504 plans, and have had one student transfer with an active 504 plan from Wyoming. As always, please reach out, stop by if you have any questions. Thanks, Terron.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I think I've had enough to save. I don't think I have anything on a report that you need to hear.
Okay.
I will, I will share, just real quick. I'll have Celo send you the newest recalibration numbers from the Activities Association. And the reason I think that's important is really, we're, we're more in the middle of 3A than we've ever been. Really, the schools that impacted the most, whereas Cody has been moved up to 4A, and Glen Rock will be now the bottom of 3A. But I'll give you all those numbers, and you can look at that. The football situation still is a little awkward. There's nine teams on the, on the east side and seven on the west. So there's, there's still some discrepancy, you know, with the football playoffs and things of that nature. But the reason I think that this is important for the Board to have is when patrons do want to talk about, you know, why aren't we here, why aren't we there? This information sort of helps justify where things are in a state that is, is losing student numbers.
All right. Thank you very much.
So for not having a report, I sort of did.
All right, Board Report. Jason?
I'll just keep it real brief. The biggest takeaway, again, and I've mentioned it before, is just the co-op purchasing program. Make sure districts utilize that. So far, 2025, over $2 million in savings to other school districts. So, I mean, that and that covers athletic equipment, roof, maintenance stuff, bleachers, I mean, like, list goes on and on, furniture. So I just want to just make sure that teachers and our staff know to utilize that. Most of those companies are already vetted, so it streamlines that, that process.
Awesome. Did you have a meeting? No? Me neither. I, I have something webbed on, I believe, the 24th. No, 23rd. I think it's the 23rd. A web to me more. Chair?
For 30 years, we've, we've argued this idea of a single-state plan for all state employees. Number one is, is not realistic and is, is more expensive. Why does that horse keep coming back out of the stable dead?
My it's, it's interesting. I think because the driving force behind the establishment of the Wyoming Educators Benefit Trust in the first place was the Wyoming Education Association and school districts, who wanted that choice. I think at this point, there are a group of legislators who are very unhappy that the WEA has taken what are shown to be by the court's unconstitutional statutes to task. And I think they see it as a way to punish WEA when, in fact, half of the school districts in the state get their insurance from WEP. Plus, numerous cities, towns, and counties. Our Waste Management District here does. There are lots of, of groups around the state. I also believe that WISBATE and WEP are more financially sound than the State Employees Group plan. They have had, they have better benefits and they cost less. But I think that there are some legislators who would like to see the money going to those organizations all be put into the one state employees group plan. The one that has not been managed the best, for sure. And I think that troubles, you know, they went from having a board manage that plan to just hiring a manager. They disbanded the board that oversaw that, that had, had representation from all over the state, and I think that's it, it comes up every well, they, they have talked about it during recalibration for probably 20 years. There's always someone who's saying, well, let's just force everybody to be in that one plan, and that doesn't save them money or make staff happier at all. So hopefully, we can talk them out of that route, so. Okay, committee, oh, well, and does anyone have anything to say about the fall meeting? I, I got materials, I got Joe the Link, and and so the folks who didn't get there can look at all the same stuff we looked at. And I have collaborated already with someone from Campbell County who wanted some examples and advice on cellphone restrictions in the schools, so that was kind of fun. Yeah. Let's have our Transportation Committee report, Jason, please. Bus stops.
Oh, that was Yeah. We just did it, not that long.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. We, yep. Couple Board members and Troy, along with the newspaper, went around, looked at the, the current bus stop and the concerns that was brought to us. We looked at some other areas in Osage. Obviously, the concerns are the, the roads and, and what, what we need to do as a district to try to find a safe and secure area to pick up the Osage students. As Troy mentioned, the with the shortage of bus drivers, with that Osage route, we had to combine another route in town, so it's not just the Osage kids that, that are utilizing that bus. So I think our future plan is to get with some other county entities and try to see if we to make Osage try to find a place safely in Osage to utilize as a bus stop.
Okay. Great. Thank you, guys, for doing that, too. Thank you for all right. And Celo, can we, from now on, since we're, we're going to have our committees be a little more active, Kim, under for your information, can we just say committee reports will be on there, too? Thank you very much. Billy?
Also, I'd like to put for future agenda items, we won't do the October 1st, but October 8th. Also, I'd like to put for future agenda items, we won't do the October first, but October eighth, we can do a grounds committee at six thirty. If that works for everybody, we'll meet before the meeting.
Okay, grounds committee six thirty on the eighth?
And I did let Adam know, so.
Okay. All right, any other future agenda items? Okay, anything just to discuss tonight? Billy?
So I've had conversations with Brad and some of the other board members. I really appreciate what the Tracy is doing. Right, Tracy? What she's doing with the lunch. I am gonna actually attend. I'm gonna come one of these days and eat lunch. How does a person go about, do we just call ahead of time?
Yeah, just let CeeLo know so we can put you in the count. So we don't run short. And then just go through the line and everything's been taken care of.
No, no, I'll, I'll pay for it, but I encourage other board members to go.
You're more than welcome.
To go and see. I've got nothing but positive feedback from several kids and several staff members.
That's awesome.
So I'm gonna go sit with the kids and eat lunch one of these days.
I, I have done that in the past and, but I did not let CeeLo know and I just paid. But yeah, that's.
No, it's, the payment's already taken care of. So if you have some free time, stop by, but do let CeeLo know, cuz there are days, now that things are getting to be more wrapped up and we are using our own supplies more and more, the closer we can get, it just does cut down on the waste cuz we always wanna cook a little bit more because it's just not fair to run out.
Yeah.
I just wanted to add to that, the middle school students that I have spoken to, that Tracy took their feedback quite to heart, actually. And I think tomorrow's is chicken Alfredo. And, and I know a lot of the students are really excited for some of the new menu items that are being offered, so.
I can tell you, it was a hit with the staff.
That's awesome. Wow. All right, that is great news. Okay, anything else? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Time for rec board.
All right, we'll call the Eastern Weston, Weston County Recreation Board to order. You have an agenda in front of you. Do I have a motion to?
To move.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Agenda's approved. I do not have any recognitions unless anybody else out there has recognitions.
Congratulations.
Seeing.
Oh, congratulations to Theresa on being a grandma.
Yes, there is that, Billy.
I do have some recognitions and I don't know off the top of my head, but I see it's on our little billiard or whatever you wanna call it to everyone that has donated to the pool.
Oh.
There's a list of names on there if you happen to see that.
Oh, I did not.
And if, if, I don't know what you think about it, but maybe we should do a thank you note to those guys too, too. All of them.
Some of them actually just gave cash amounts during the class, the class reunion. But we definitely can for those that, you know, have, have written checks and stuff that we can trace right back to, we will do.
We could sure sign, thank yous, cuz I think we could.
The golf course got a little wild and I think people were just happy to help, but didn't think about how they were helping.
So I'm sorry, I'm taking a little more than Joe's two minutes, but is that something too we can put on the website, thanking all the donors for the pool and the beef as well? I mean, so that way if they go to the website, parents whatever can see besides that building.
And there is also a, there's a plan to, I don't wanna steal their thunder here, but there is a plan to, to recognize others in another way in an upcoming event.
Any other recognitions? Thank you for those. Moving on to visitors comments, staff input and special programs. I see no visitors. Is there anybody out in Zoom land? Seeing none, we'll move on to action items. You have a consent agenda in front of you. Do I have a motion?
Take a motion.
And properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Consent agenda's approved. I have no old business or new business for you. I have nothing for your information. Unless somebody has some discussion items.
Aye, so move.
Seeing none, meeting adjourned.